All right, welcome everyone. We appreciate you being here. This is kind of a new committee, something that's very new to me. Love the idea. So at our board meeting, our last board meeting, the idea came up of us having three committees for different aspects of what the proposal we've been presented. So our first committee meeting is right now one o'clock. It's our Mooreish proposal committee.
Two p.m.
City.
Two p.m.
Two o'clock.
It's okay.
And then we have a second committee after this one. It'll be at three o'clock. That's the new construction committee. And then our last committee is a property search committee. And so with that, we're going to develop some parameters for the meetings. And so we're going to turn it over to our committee here to identify how these meetings will look one forward and kind of set the foundation of the structure. All right, so basically setting up how we want these to look, what the structure will be for this, the parameters.
I think our discussion was to set guidelines and parameters for Jim, right? For negotiations.
Yeah, well, we should have a chairperson if you'd like to volunteer.
Oh, I'd like to volunteer.
Yeah, so we're gonna have, we're gonna have a chairperson and then a recording secretary. I thought we were gonna get Sue on all these because there might be extensive notes. Isn't that what I said at the last meeting or maybe I forgot?
Okay, we can.
But maybe in the future, yeah, in the future, have an actual recording secretary. Just being a kind of a, a very important topic in the community. That way they can have the minutes and it's done, you know, more detailed than maybe what we can do. Is that, is that sound fair?
Yes.
Does that sound fair, Carrie?
Yeah.
Or, I mean, I could listen to the tape, but just in case. All right, and then what else you think we need to do before we start the actual?
I think we need to identify what's most important, our priorities in terms of, if this is the sale group, right? What is it?
Thank you, thank you.
What is it that's most important in terms of the parameters that we will assign? Would you agree?
Yes.
Obviously, there's a, there's a dollar. There's a dollar amount on, can you hear okay, Travis? See back there. Travis?
I think you walked out.
Okay, sorry. I'm not getting any indication that we're picking it up, but the dollar amount that's on the table obviously is up for discussion. But we had also talked at our board meeting about some of the things that we need to consider that may not be included in that dollar amount in our counter proposal. There were some timelines that needed to be considered. And I would, based on personal years of experience with negotiations, those are usually in our court to identify. And I'm sure there are others on people's lists. We had talked about some of the additional expenses that we might incur related to sewer and water and everything else, property taxes, anything like that. So is that enough to start the discussion? Or do you need to have more, Chuck?
Of course, not that I need to have more. I don't need a minimum or a max, we have to set goals. Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. We might need three microphones, I don't know. So there's a forty million dollar offer on the table. But we're starting, that really is immaterial because we have to start back out before that even occurred. And we have to have parameters. And the parameters were that somebody had negotiated a building with the tie to that sale. I know we've got our committee split up now and that's how we came up with the forty million dollar price. So I, I think what we need to do is just wipe some of it off the table. Jim's gonna go in negotiations with a, our attorney and along with a couple of board members. I think you have volunteered, Alyssa.
I did.
And I did. And maybe at the next meeting, have Mr., I wanted to say, what's his first name? Tyler. I almost called him Travis, sorry Travis. Mr. Tyler Mouseholder.
Ross Messler.
Ross Messler, I apologize. Ross Messler to come to the meeting and tell us what he has to offer and why does he have to offer it? I, I don't know how else to start. I mean, that's a parameter. And if you want to go off the old purchase agreement, I mean, he could work off that, I suppose, for lack of better terms, but, you know. Oh. I just. So that's, that's just my thought, all right, just initially, go ahead.
I guess for me, it's, you know, we're, we were brought a proposal and that's where we're focusing all of our attention. You know, is how are we gonna sell this school? Am I getting that right?
That's this group.
That's this group. And we got the other two meetings that are coming up right after this.
Right, but we haven't even, I don't know. Made that.
Decision.
Yeah, we haven't. So I guess it's, I don't know, it's hard for me to move forward with what we need from a sale when I am still stuck on, well, let's look at what we have and why, and why do we need to change that, I guess? Like, why? You know?
I, I, I think that's a great.
I think more needs to go into, how many kids are we gonna lose from the neigh, the surrounding neighborhoods? How many, you know, how is this gonna affect?
I, I don't.
The other elementarys and.
In fairness to the district, I don't know if we can concentrate on that. We have to, if, if this guy, I mean, if anybody comes to you and say, hey, we want to buy your house, you listen to them. So I think that we at least have to listen to what the gentleman has to say. And I know he's already went through a lot of work with our former superintendent, but the parameters weren't set there. So I think that's why we got all this other collage of, oh, you're gonna have this school, it's gonna be this big, it's gonna cost you this amount of money. So if we can just concentrate on Tyler, I, I think what we need to do is, is just hear what he has to say. And he's gonna have to understand when he comes in, Jim, and you, you, you're gonna be a spoke, the conduit right from us to him is that you're gonna tell him that, hey, listen, I know you made an offer and the template's okay. I mean, you know, it's purchase agreements are pretty standard. And say, the board, I don't, I'm speaking for myself, I shouldn't say the board. Chuck is asking you come in and say, okay, how did you come up with this forty million dollars? What's the assessed value of the building, which we know is probably not that much close? And why do you need this property? And as a parent, if you need the property and if you're gonna build regardless, what's the best offer you can give the district? With all the other information we have, because all the news now says they're not gonna build anything there currently. That doesn't mean a company's not gonna come in next week. But we really can't worry about all that. We have a piece of property, agreed on that, right? That we own, that has children in it. That house is four hundred and twenty?
Yeah, about four fifty.
Okay, four fifty, I, I, and they want to make an offer for the building.
Right.
I, I mean, you have to listen to the gentleman, whether we like him or not, or I don't know, I don't care, I shouldn't have said that. But however everybody personally feels.
Yeah.
And or how the community feels. And he wants to make an offer and he's gonna tell us why his offer's fair instead of saying, well, I'm buying you a building. I'm gonna build you a building just down the road, so you should move based on that. We should base it on our own findings in the future of what it would cost us to do a building and property. And then that's how we're gonna come up with a price, not them doing it and all these people that were kind of tied together. So at the end of the day, our job here is to say, come to the meeting. There's gonna be a few board members here with that and maybe an attorney. And you're gonna offer some amount of money and tell us why we should take that.
Right.
And then at that point, the Board of Education's gonna say yes or no. I, I mean, simple terms, I'm just simplifying it, I don't make it over complicated. I don't think anybody in your audience would argue with it. If somebody comes and says, hey, I wanna buy your house and you tell them, I want five million, and they say, no, we're gonna give you four, and you, you grant four and a half. And, and do we even need to sell? Like, like you said, but at that point, we still gotta listen to this offer. Maybe he says a hundred million, I don't know, I don't know how bad he needs it. I, I don't know that answer. Do you?
No.
I mean, does anybody know that answer? I'm just.
No, no.
Okay, if nobody knows that answer, then, Jim, what do you think?
I agree. My only question would be how soon would you want him here to answer those questions? Are you talking about the next meeting or that's just next Wednesday?
Okay, so my thing is, I don't want him communicating without the board. Like, anything that goes through you needs to be sent to the, the entire board, not just a subcommittee here and there and you. And like, he, he needs to address us because we're the one who, who are making the decision. I don't want emails going back and forth without the board involved.
So you want all seven board members?
Well, not here, but just like any communication done, that way we all have the same information. It's not going, you know, it's, we don't have a, a middleman to, you know.
I, I'm definitely not opposed, I'm just wondering then why you want me to negotiate on behalf of the board? If you're gonna be there, why doesn't the board just?
Just so I can see, what, follow what's going on without having to ask for it. And it's because some stuff I might not know to ask for, you know? So that way I have everything just to keep up.
Okay, yes, I agree.
So I can follow.
Yes, because I'm only gonna be talking with Tyler about the parameters you set anyway. But yes, definitely follow.
But I still would like to see all communication between the school and.
Yes.
So she's saying that she wants all seven board members to be on the subject of all.
Well, well, yeah, that should be done at a, a regular open meet. But I'm saying also, like, any communications that Jim has with Tyler, I want the board to be copied on it so we can follow the back and forth communication going through, just so we can, we have a heads up on what's about to come to the meeting and be present, you know?
Yep, I can do that.
So going back to our original comments, we've been offered forty million dollars. The delivery of those dollars, I think, is probably one of the areas that we can have a conversation.
Yes.
With Tyler and the, the value that he's offering, the dollars and the timing. Would you agree?
I have no issue. I don't, what's the time, if you wanted to buy it?
There were, there were various timelines that.
So he said two different things. In the proposal, it's written as in a scroll, we get twenty million and then you get the rest based on certain performances, yes. And then when we were at the town hall, he mentioned that we would get thirty-nine million all at once and that they would hold a million dollars until we vacated the school. So he's put out both of those, which I would run with and say, you said we get thirty-nine million. If you go with the forty million. Personally, like, I liked the idea that was talked about at our last board meeting when we went substantially higher because of some of the unknowns. Kim, I believe, brought out a fifty-five million dollar response. Timing, as she's referencing, I've been thinking on this too, because originally it was by two thousand twenty-eight. I don't see why this board can't ask for five years. And, you know, if you go through with this, ask for five years and then if you have the money in a scroll, it's building equity. It's building money and then you could take your time and make your decision on whether you want to build another building or buy more property or. So I think there's options in here within the parameters. I think that the tone of this meeting sets the tone for the other ones, like what you guys decided to do here with the proposal. But I think there's opportunities with timing and money to request and give me permission to talk with Tyler about.
I, I think that's completely fair. And in, in order to come up with the additional dollars that we had spoken about in our meeting, I think we have to consider some of those areas, like, do we expect forty million dollars to cover the cost of a building within, what, three to four years if it's being built? Given the increases in costs and supplies and, and also then those additional expenses that we would likely incur.
I still come back to my original thing, he wants to buy our building, make us an offer. I don't even know why we need to sell it right now because there's nothing going in there. But, I mean, if he makes it so sweet that we cannot withhold that, you know what I mean? Let him talk. I mean, I don't know. You're right, Jim, these are all kind of tied together because I really can't come up with a price. If, if I was forced to sell that building, even a speaker there's.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Trying to tone my voice down because of my things, I talk too loud. Of course, twelve people at the gun range yesterday didn't think so when I told them to point their guns in the right direction. Okay, so that's why. All right. I lost my train of thought here for a minute, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, I mean, we can ask for whatever money we want and everybody had great suggestions, Alyssa did and Kim did about, oh, the building may cost us this, but maybe we did this a little backwards. Maybe we should find out what a building would cost, right?
Yes.
I mean, we came up with three committees, but see what an actual building would cost with a price guarantee for two years, different sizes. Because I did talk to School of Choice last month, I believe, and, you know, some people are kind of like, well, do we bring in limited kids? Do we just open the floodgates? Do we, you know, you know, whatever that might be. But that determines our declining enrollment too. If, if we sold the school, if we did, who says we need to build a new school right away? And if we, if we did not build a school, then we take that money, put it into our existing buildings, maybe build a wing or two here and there on, on some of the buildings and restructure the bus routes or something. But, but at the end of the day, I, I'm, now I'm, I'm maybe, I don't know if we, I set this order of committees. But I, I don't know, I'm, I'm asking you guys to thought, this is an open meeting, just a thought process, it is our first meeting. I don't know.
But I still think we have timelines that have been given to us as well, that we need to respond to at least.
Well, he gave them to us.
Right, right, exactly, so, so to.
And him and Rod agreed to that, and it's not my timeline. I told, I've made this statement to many people and, and I think you agree with it. It's like I walked into quicksand, it's like we got a couple of board memos, I went back and looked, but now it's, it's, oh, here it is.
But I think it's, we're in, it's in our court to push back and say, here's, here are the timelines that we as a district want. I know they have their deadlines and their timelines.
Yeah, it's not ours.
And the district, we have to say, this is what we need and what we want in order to proceed.
I think that's fair, yeah, that, that, that's a fair statement. That's a fair statement.
Everything needs to be set on our terms, yeah.
Okay, so tell me the dates and times and monies that you guys want. Oh, I mean, that, if that's what, that's our.
Well, starting with Jim's comment about five years.
That's fine.
And in the meantime, the money can sit until decisions are made.
What money, what money's gonna be said?
The money that we would, we would counter.
One of the downsides that amazes me throughout this process is that the people who could potentially be buying are able to hear us and our strategy.
Yeah, that's unfortunate, right? Has the attorney said that, I mean, there's no way to go into any type of session, it has to be all public view.
Not for selling.
Right, that's great. That's their property, not ours technically.
But up till this point, we haven't pushed back.
That's right.
So, so.
Well, we didn't push back, no, someone, it's, we didn't know about it, somebody else didn't push back. We didn't push back because I didn't know about anything until May. No, June. Well, in July, I saw the purchase agreement, but whenever it was that Rod sent a, a letter out saying that they would be here on June twenty-fifth as the official notice, I think.
But I think we've all agreed, now it's in our court.
Okay.
Now we, but do, do you think, I mean?
Yeah, it is, to, to some extent. Or you just slammed the door in the guy's face and let him come back. I don't know, I don't wanna do that, but, I mean, we are the homeowner.
So I guess what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
So Autumn, I don't think is under, like, I don't think she's for the sale, we're talking about money and time. I don't think she's even, I don't speak for you, but the mindset of even selling at this time, is that?
Well, I don't have a reason. I don't have, like, this was brought up in June, late June. And to me, it screams corrupt, like, it just, it's not good. So, yeah, I wanna stay far away from those people if that's how they do business, like, I'm not afraid to admit that. So that's where my pushback is coming from. And, and the fact that parents have reached out, that if they sell, if they're living around Moore's, they're not, they're not coming back to Creek. So what do we do with that? I'm more concerned with those families who this directly impacts their everyday life. And how it plays into.
But the discussion is how, where are the parameters?
Yeah, yeah. So.
As I said, I mean, I don't think anybody's for selling the school, like, you know, especially being rushed.
Yeah.
But we, we do have a guy, and you know how I feel about this personally, we do have a guy came to us and said, hey, I wanna give you forty million dollars for a school. Let's forget about how it came to us first now, for a moment, I'm not gonna let that subject go. But that, the, the guy came to us with forty million. We have to at least give Jim and this board some direction on which way we go. And if, if you want full, just an open board meeting whenever he wants to come and talk to us, I mean, we could do that. It might make it a little bit more muddier with eight of us negotiating against him. But I, I don't know, is that what you're feeling like?
Yeah, I just want to be able to see the conversations happening.
Okay.
Like.
I, I do too.
I don't want any conversations to go past the board again, like.
Agreed.
It's public property, you know, it's, it's our, yeah.
So am I, because we can bring it to a meeting just like this.
Yeah, absolutely.
Maybe we set the next proposal committee, that he can be part of that. Might fit this better than a board meeting.
Yeah, because we'll have board members here that will communicate with other board members and maybe all the board members will show up.
That's what.
Yeah, they can show up, not every board member comes to every meeting.
Right, but I just think it would be beneficial for all of us to have all of the information, you know?
Oh, yeah, that's why I wanted at least one or two board members there so they could spread it back to us immediately instead of maybe missing an email or not getting an email or.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's, and this is the, the security blanket for that, like.
That's fine.
Whatever happens, the board needs to be notified.
So, so if we're gonna look at the proposal, because we are the sale group, I'll keep bringing us back to that. I want to set the parameters that we would need to consider if we are going to have meetings with the folks who have given us the offer.
Oops, sorry.
So I, I heard fifty-five million in five years.
I think that's, that's been brought up.
You need fifty-five million, you need five years.
Fifty-five million with fifty-four going into a scroll. Like, he stated he was only one million off, less than fifty-four going into a scroll, the other million be given upon being vacated. And.
Which you want five years to move there?
Five years to move, so two thousand thirty, fall of two thousand thirty.
Which would give you the flexibility of how that's done, whether it's a new building, an addition, or, you know, to accommodate the district's needs.
You guys would have the time to make the decision on what the next step would be. You don't have to hurry and jump into building a new building. You don't have to hurry and jump in to buy a new property. You can take your time and evaluate that.
That's all we need.
I think so, I think the idea, probably one of the biggest obstacles would be, it's sent, I sense that people are feeling rushed with it. And so you get the money right away, you have to commit to building right away, maybe we don't want a building. This gives you time at least to make that best decision. If you decide to do it earlier, so be it, but if you decide to wait two years, you've built up all that extra money, so.
We have to start at some point.
Yeah, and so what you're saying is that we need to set a price?
Counter, I'm, I was saying counter, you don't have to.
Yeah, because I thought we were starting over, so bring us a new offer, right? And then we can counter that. Am I getting, am I doing that?
That's okay.
I mean, definitely. I don't think he's gonna bring you an offer different than what he's already submitted, he might, but.
Well, at least it would be done within the bylaws of the board, so.
Yeah, let him make an offer. So we're gonna have board members here, just maybe that wanna come. We're gonna have him show up, he's gonna present a purchase agreement. Right, so far, Jim?
Yep.
He's gonna provide a purchase agreement with the details. And the board can research that agreement, that purchase agreement, and then either make a counter offer, accept it or deny it.
Yeah.
How's that sound? I mean, there were, there were your three choices.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I think first he needs to bring us an offer, then we counter. Like, I don't wanna just, yeah, go in with, hey, we made our mind up, it's fifty-five million, you know? I want it.
So are we saying that we don't want Jim to have a conversation with him in the meantime? To, to present the counter that we're talking about right now?
We're not.
I mean, right now, it's being videoed anyway, so.
He's gonna know what's. I mean, basically is, is that that purchase agreement is null and void that you have in your hand. The purchase agreement's null and void because we've established that there is no board parameter set and we got it dumped on us right away and we feel rushed. Two is, we set the committee up, he can start new, he wants to buy the building and the property or he doesn't. Make us an offer, hey, he's listened to us, forty million probably is not gonna cut it, but Jim says that that's probably all he's gonna offer. Okay, fine, good, all our cards are on a table, we're playing Texas Hold'em. We have one or two cards in our hand, he has one or two cards in his hand. And, and then when he does come to make a, an offer or a counter or a new offer, then we are all gonna be here.
And then that would start the negotiation, then we give Jim the parameters and negotiate, then, you know, that's.
Well, we've already said that, Jim's gonna negotiate with them, there's gonna be no more one-on-one or two-on-one or however that it was done in the past.
Right.
Because that's kept from the public eye. So if Tyler wants to come in here and there's only three board members that are here and Jim's here, that's the parameters.
Right.
I think that's fair, we gotta start somewhere.
But we can still get the follow-up, the summary, it will go out, yeah.
Because you're gonna have two or three board members here, Autumn, and it won't be
Right.
squirreled away and, I'm sorry, I gotta turn this off. It won't, it won't be, it won't, it won't be squirreled away in some, you know, pocket that somebody may not see. Because let's face it, with three or four board members here, it's gonna get back to their board members and I'm sure that Mr. Kitchen, this time, is gonna make sure everything gets delivered to everybody and now, oh, it got delivered to this person, or it got delivered to this person, or it was, you know what I mean?
Right.
And I, and I think that would make me feel better.
Right.
That's all I can say, is that, and I would joke, it's a little watered down and confusing, but hopefully you can.
Yeah, so I guess we can't set the parameters if we don't have a, an offer proposed to us. Is that, am I following? I like, I'm asking, because we, right now, there is no offer, right? Because the other one is null and void. So we would need a new offer before we can set any parameters based around an offer.
There you go. I mean, I, I hate to bring that, but I feel like that, that purchase agreement's null and void.
Right.
And I don't know if I'm correct, I'm not an attorney.
Yeah.
But the board has to prove it, we saw it quickly, they tried to shove it down us, we weren't told about it. Now I know about it and the rest of the board does, and now we're kind of like, oh, wait a minute, let's, let's, just give us an offer. Because you, we, whose fault is, they didn't follow the proper procedures to get to us, end of story.
So, so if you look at the timelines that we talked about earlier.
Right.
Like them or not.
Yeah.
The at closing, which we said, they said to us, eight thirty-one or nine thirty being the deadline. So somewhere in that month.
Right.
And so if, if we don't have an agreement by then, I, as I understand it, then this is truly null and void.
Well, we gotta do it legally, that's the, the whole, we have to do it legally, it's.
So you're going off the purchase agreement that we currently have?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
So this is, this is how I, I documented what I read from the purchase agreement.
I'm not an attorney neither and I know just enough about law to get me in trouble, did anybody sign the purchase agreement at the school?
No.
No, not.
Okay, then that purchase agreement's null and void. It, it really, it's, I mean, I don't, you know, it, it's like wipe your butt with it because he gave us a piece of paper. He said, here's the offer. I even asked a couple of our board members, did anybody know about it back in May? Nobody knew anything about it. It's so, it's, it's null and void, it's, it's really nothing. He almost has to rewrite that with new dates, he can use the same dates if he wants, Carrie.
No, I know, I, I know.
Yeah, and then just give it to us, yeah.
This one, we are not going to need any deadlines that are currently listed there.
Well, he could, he could do it if he said, I'm gonna give you sixty million dollars for this school and you can live there for five or ten years. And why wouldn't I do that? But I'm not, once again, it's a board decision, not a Chuck decision. But at, at that point, he can put whatever date he wants in there, Jim, and he can put whatever price he wants in there. And then the board will look at it and say, wow, yay, birthday.
So, so if I might, just, these are the, these are the list of dispersments. Well, I, this, this, this is how I think.
Okay.
So these are a list of dispersments that were listed in the purchase agreement was at closing and listed the date that I just mentioned.
Yeah, I read that, twenty million.
And then district submits an architectural, engineering and construction contract, that was another. And then district submits an architectural, engineering, and construction contract, that was another, uh, month, eleven thirty or twelve thirty-one. Completion of one hundred percent, school design six thirty, substantial construction completion six thirty, then, and then the vacation and turnover of the property, um, which being Morris to the purchaser, which is another thing that we should probably acknowledge, is our ability to keep students in there, um, for a period of time.
Yeah.
Five years.
Yeah.
Or whatever.
These timelines are irrelevant, because they are from an old contract that is no good.
Absolutely. I'm just mentioning them because those are the types of things that were listed.
He can relist them.
Yeah.
I mean, he could go, I mean, he could hear, he's hearing our meeting probably, right?
Probably.
Yeah, or he's got somebody to listen to, I'm sure he's not on a Friday afternoon, rather be on a boat somewhere, you know, listening to Swartz Creek Community Schools, and he's got somebody listening about how do they feel now, and I think he can get the flavor, he can take his contract, change some dates, change some prices. He'll submit it to Jim, Jim will have some, obviously discussion, but Jim's not gonna say, no, we need this, or we need that, you make your offer, that's a board decision.
And I think in those parameters, I thought that we agreed that we're gonna hire out, we're gonna bid, we're gonna, you know, do that, so.
Yeah, that's gonna be our need.
And that's on our time as well.
That's on the construction.
Yeah, but that's, like, those parameters are.
And I don't know why everybody decided on French, because we never put that out to bid.
Right.
In the district, that large of a contract, we should put that out to bid, we should ask three engineering slash architectural firms that were, if we get that far, that we're looking at a forty-five, fifty-five, sixty-five thousand square foot building, maybe we don't need that, maybe we need twenty-five and add some wings on once the, the board decides that, and says, if we even get that far, and then say, hey, listen, give me three architectural bids, and that will go through our normal process, where we'll bring three architects in and interview, right?
We can, yes.
Well, which way should it be done?
Well, I believe that, that being a service, that it technically would not go to the board according to policy, but we can definitely bring it. That would not be, there would be no reason not to.
Okay, I thought that's what we did the last, Rod, Rod made a big argument that, no, we, we sent it out to five architectural firms before we went to Ock. I thought that's what he said. Yeah, we got in a big argument up here at the board meetings, well, no, I sent the five architectural firms because I was talking about Ock, not that it was Ock, I don't even know Ock. But I was just talking that we have, with that big of a contract, three million dollars, I think that's what we paid him, that, that's something that should not be, that, that should be put out to bid, and people should do their due diligence. So, that's another thing, that, I'm getting off, I apologize, I wanted to, I wanted to.
So Jim, the new construction committee will likely be discussing that.
Yes, yeah, that's why I said.
Right, so, so, um.
Cause I see French here.
Yeah.
What are the district's needs anticipated over the next, what, five years, plus?
Yeah.
And, um, what that would look like, would you agree, Chuck? I mean.
Yes, that's why I was, I know.
And, and then considering things like free, free preschool for four-year-olds, and, um, what that's going to do to enrollment over time.
Yeah, uh.
Okay, so let's get it back.
So, yeah, this one, so, or is that, I mean, I'm not trying to rush things or anything, but like, is, is that what we, or what was decided at this committee, is that first we need, um, a, an offer, yeah, yeah, brought, yeah, okay, so I think.
And so Jim will reach out to Tyler and say, we're gonna get a new offer, he'll communicate with us on that, like, hey, I reached out to Tyler, okay.
So what I need from you then is the next meeting, um, that you, that we're gonna have for the Morris proposal, and that'll be the meeting that I worked to get Tyler here for.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Is it too much to ask to have the proposal like a couple days before, so we can review it before he's here? So we can have like a productive.
Study session?
Yeah. I don't know, that's too much to ask.
I don't think that would be an issue.
Okay.
And that's gonna be done at an open meeting, right?
Meeting like this.
Or a sub, no, I'm talking about an open board meeting, where we're all, no, yeah, but like, a Wednesday.
I, I think we should do it on a Wednesday, but I was just gonna do, yeah, but I was just gonna have it like this, your Morris Proposal Committee team.
Okay. Cause yeah, this, I had to leave work early today, like, so, it's, that's tricky. And I would, if he's gonna come present an offer, that's kind of a big deal.
Well, the, the, the offer he makes, we're not, if, if he came in today and said, I'm here to propose to make an offer, whatever the dollar amount is, whatever the terms are. Thank you, Jim. I don't think any of us, you know, we're gonna send it to our attorney then, cause he should come to us first, and we'll send it to the attorney, let them review it, and then come back to us, and then, you know, or we could flat out just deny it on money and other things, but i- if we even came close to even accepting anything, it would not be contingent, it would be contingent upon attorneys and us probably waiting to another meeting or two to, to discuss and gnaw on it, and then go from there, that would be the prudent thing to do.
Okay, sorry, I'm just, I'm learning as I go here.
No, no, we're all learning.
Yeah.
On the minus, cause not too many schools sell property, like this large.
Right, we have a property committee to, to consider, right, as part of this conversation.
Okay, are we good?
Could we, could we have a special board meeting where that's all we talk about, is the proposal, cause I feel like we could really talk about it with him.
We can definitely, that's all, that's definitely an option.
Okay.
Yeah, before we counter, is that what you're saying, like, yeah?
Yeah, so he'll come in, do the proposal, this is what I'm thinking, and then we can ask questions, and that's what the whole meeting would be about?
Yeah.
But you want the proposal prior to?
Yes, if that's okay.
Yeah, no, I think that's necessary.
So we just need to identify.
Can I hold my mic down?
Would the eighth be too soon?
We might, next, I mean, one following.
Um, I just think about Tyler and how fast he makes his proposal, would be too soon for us.
Did he text you, make a proposal already?
No, I thought it was like calendar.
All right. I'm being sarcastic, I was just hoping.
September.
He said all deals are off or something.
September eighth is a Monday.
I can't.
Okay. We have one on the ten.
We do. Right.
If you wanted to go, I have, I mean, I say bar between on the seventeenth, but I could do Monday the fifteenth.
I'm available.
I am too. What time, six, at six?
Yeah, it's, it's a special board meeting, I would say six o'clock.
Yeah, if that's six, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'll make my schedule change, I'd guess something, but that's not that important. Six P M?
Yes.
Okay, I put it in. Of course, Sue will send it and put it on our Google Calendar ASAP. Thank you.
And if we can have Sue, then that's maybe, I know she has other things to do, but that would be great, too.
For sure.
Okay.
You're talking about the next, this meeting, for sure.
So can I just recap?
Yep.
I did take note of the parameters that we talked about, was fifty-five million, and that, that could be subject to change. Um, and it could be split out in different ways, depends on the proposal we're given, and then a desire for five years, um, to make the decision of how we proceed.
As an incoming superintendent, that's one of the biggest things, because I know that that would be a worry of what you're gonna do with four hundred and fifty kids. So if you can get five years, that would be exceptional for the incoming.
Would everybody be okay if I listed our, um.
I don't know if you should put a dollar amount on it, because like, like, like Autumn said, I don't even know if we put a dollar amount on, because then he knows, well, I'll start out at forty-five, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-four, fifty-five, and, and is that okay? And tha- that's all I'm saying, Carrie, on that, and number two is that, and, and Jim's right, what he was trying to say was, is that if, if we could get money like that, put it in the bank and gain interest while we're getting ready to build a building. I don't know, though, that I bought some buildings, and it seems like putting money in the bank and buying a building, you make more money by buying the building out, cause they're going up faster than the interest rates are in your money in the bank, but I, I, it might even be more than if we waited that long, or like you said, with declining enrollment, or maybe there's an increase in enrollment, I don't know. Um, then we could make a decision there, and that's why I hope, uh, is Travis, did Travis then disappear, did he, I lost?
He's there.
Okay, oh, all right, yeah, I gotta look, yeah, so with that being said, um, yeah, I'll get to that on the, on the next subcommittee.
So, so then the other thing that I think, I think we need to have documented, I know that it needs to be part of the conversation with Tyler, is our ability to keep the students in the building during that period of time.
Mm-hmm.
Um, unless you just wanna uproot them, Chuck, to another building, Jim, which I don't think is your desire.
No, nobody desires to do that, I just think that, yeah, we.
Yeah.
The next subcommittee.
Remain in the building.
Yeah, I got a love-hate relationship with that though, too, because what if they're tearing down, I mean, they already tore down the church right in the backyard, but you know.
I'm getting a lot of complaints from citizens about dust, debris, it's getting in people's houses, it's getting in, um, the school, I, I don't know that, I drove through it. I mean, I can't tell, just because of my, some of my fiscal.
My daughter was in the summer program over there, and she had mentioned.
Yeah, so.
How heavy the air was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Tyler called me last week to come out because he wanted to update us on the demolitions that they're doing and filling in of the retention pond that was by the church. Um, he assured me that at least when they're bringing in the dirt, that they weren't gonna be bringing in when kids were here. Um, he said with the dust, they have, that's, they have gotten complaints about that, he said they have to go through, um, the Monday, uh, air quality testing, so that could be requested at any time to ensure, but yes, they are getting lots of complaints about the dust.
Well, we could put that in our parameters too, right? Like, no tearing stuff down next door to our school as long as we're at, we're in it, yeah.
I know it's a short leash with the parameters, you can't take it back when it's probably heard, but, uh, at least it gives us something to work with now, and the board's fully informed. Yes, the public's fully informed because they're sitting through these meetings, I mean, they may agree or disagree, but at least everything's being done now in the open, and it was not done before in the open, so I think it's our step in the right direction, um, whether we agree to disagree or not. Okay, so, good. Um, so are you okay with the parameters in this first committee meeting, or is there anything that we'd like to add? Everybody take a minute to think about, we got a few minutes before we start our second committee.
Well, we also have a public comment.
Yeah, okay, yeah, all right, thanks. Can we comment, and we would have committee comment, yeah, we could still have committee comment, yeah. All right, so where do you want the public to comment, up here maybe? Do you wanna?
Well, could you just read back what we kind of established, just so I have a summary, recap? What, what we did?
Yeah, we're going to have a meeting with Tyler.
Yep, on Monday, September fifteenth.
Entire boards will be invited. At six o'clock, you can bring us an offer, you're going to contact him in advance?
Yes.
Okay, just bring us an offer.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
And, and that's, that, okay, that's what he's going to, and he doesn't have to leave, pretends he's here for us, eh?
Proposal, proposal. And maybe be available in advance, so we're going to ask for it.
I don't know if you guys are aware or not, but every presentation that, um, Tyler Ross Miller has made for a potential buyer, uh, he has a, uh, process or schematic of what they're looking to do, and they were talking about four smaller semiconductor plants. So, the first one would take five years to build, the second one, five years to build. By the time they build all four, we're talking twenty years down the road, so that might be something that might also wanna be considered. You might be able to hold on to that money for a really long time, and make a lot more money if they don't demand that you take the school down right away.
What's your name?
Denise Smith. Yeah, you're welcome. Yeah, I'm in Lindwood Farms, I'm right across the street from Morris Road, so, or Morris School, so.
You're welcome.
Hi, everybody. I live there on the corner of Lyndon and Maple Road, I'm Leah Davis. I want you guys to have a conversation to, to consider the fact that this money that they're offering you is actually taken unlawfully from the state, and what are the possibilities of it being clogged back? And this is a, a public asset, and Morris Elementary School is a public asset for the people that live there, in that area. And so, uh, the residents are not happy about that. Well, and, not just for the fact that the school itself, for the kids, for the structure, and, you know, the kids, they walk to school. They're from the, um, there's nine subdivisions in the area, and, um, even after school, the kids go and they play in the playground, they fly their kites, they ride their bikes, the parents, the people in the neighborhood, the neighbors, walk their dogs. You know, so this, this is a very busy corner, Lyndon and Maple Road. And there's no sidewalks, there's one, on Maple Road, about quarter of a mile, and that's about it. So, um, just consider the asset that Morris Elementary School is for the people in that area, and the possibility of you guys just, you know, letting these people come in and give you what, blood money. This money is, should not be used for this, to take away a public asset, so, thank you.
Hi, everybody, Dot Ludwig. Hey, and just in case you guys don't know, I, I did testify on, uh, Wednesday in Lansing. Um, I do have the M E D C contract, there's no way they're gonna wait five years, just to give you a heads up. They have to have this land cleared out, I believe it's by May twenty-second of twenty twenty-eight, and then they get their certificate in August to proceed to start building, so that might be something you need to take in consideration, I don't think they're gonna wanna go that far, so, um, also, I know pretty much with my offer they gave me, and from what I've been hearing too, they're not gonna go higher than forty million, and they're not budgeting on my home either, so you have to remember, our land is very valuable, if they threaten you with a berm, which they're going to, cause they threatened me, um, that berm, I'm seven doors down from you guys, and it's gonna turn that corner into a quarter of a mile to where they can't touch or build. So make sure, when the berm gets brought up to you, you say, that's another ten million, cause yeah, you're right, my land is more valuable, cause there's nobody that's gonna wanna build next to a school, cause they, there's, there's those parameters, so just keep those dates in mind. They're gonna try to push this faster than you think, okay, and if anybody needs a copy of that, uh, M E D C contract or whatever, I have it for May twenty-second of twenty twenty-eight, okay? Okay, if I send it to Chuck, I'll send it to Chuck, can you send it to everybody? Yeah, cause they have four, four different, uh, key monuments that they gotta, they gotta meet before they each get their money. So I believe that their first key monument, I'm just saying these numbers say they got a hundred and fifteen million, the next, I think we're in key monument two is where now, once they spend that money and they go through all their notes and everything, they get another additional money, I think that this is probably where the school's falling right now, I know they just, I believe key monument is sixty-three million is what they're getting, so, they, um, every milestone they meet, they get their money. So, but they got, like I said, May twenty-second, twenty twenty-eight is their final milestone, so be prepared, they're gonna, they're gonna try to still shove this on you, okay?
Sue Desha, we also have to realize that a company that comes in there isn't gonna want that school there. So even though that they've given you a top dollar of forty million, you always can negotiate with whatever company that comes in. So just keep that in mind also, and they will also decide a time limit for you, okay?
My name is Gerald Roberts, I live in Flint Township, I do pay taxes, I've lived here for over nineteen seventy-one, paid school taxes, my kids went to Morris, they went to Swartz Creek Schools, I'm a resident here. I asked this question in the meeting over here in the auditorium, to the financial director. I've also asked this question at Monday Township of the trustees. I've also asked this question at Monday Township of the trustees. And I was at a board of review meeting where the assessor was there. And I asked her these questions. Every, each and one of those particular properties that have been taken down had a tax base. Either it was protected under the headly, or it was bought after that period of time, and it went on. The S C V value of the property that the tax multiplier was based on. Every one of those properties have been torn down. They did it for a purpose, they leveled it, it goes back to the property value. Now, Mr. Herman has made this as a nonprofit. He's tried to get out paying taxes even on the leveled ground, that's my hearsay. That I hear. So you guys have lost. Basically, a revenue from every one of those particular properties with regard to the school board here in the meetings here. And even if it went back to the basic land value, you've lost that, too. If, if they get their profit, and they, they're nonprofit, and they don't have any money there. The school board meeting that I was over there to, I think you had a budget of about fifty-three million dollars, and, um. Mr. Melkey, he brought up that, uh, we had a problem with, uh, kids coming in from the Flint school system. And the multiplier was of ten thousand dollars, and that actually cost fourteen thousand and five hundred dollars. So we were in the hole to the tune of, I think the figure you had was about eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Because of those particular lost revenues from the added kids coming into the school system here. The point was, too, that the school system, as they were operating, was going in every year a deficit of one million dollars. Isn't this kind of strange? One other thing with regard to the school system and losing the kids at that particular location and the neighborhood kids coming into that. They came back and not only did that, is they tore down the church, a religious aspect of our community. Is this right? Is this right, I ask you? And it was shoved down our throats. And supposedly, and I listened to some of the stuff that Mr., uh, Mike Gilbreth. He had on the pan the assistant to the chairperson, and then he called the chairperson at that point. Am I supposed to be stop talking? I got a lot more to say. But, uh, anyways, think before you do this. I, I know, we got one man there that is running this whole show, and if it was brought to justice with regard to. Nonprofit, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, he's got five of them, a million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. He's supposed to put in forty hours' work week for every one of those nonprofits. Is anybody to hold him to task for that? No? Here you did this, we were behind bars. It seems like whatever political party that you're in, somebody wants the other way. Just saying.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts.
Hi, Jenny Malkast. Um, I was just gonna mention, so, um, I know Don mentioned that he went and testified this week. Um, at a subcommittee meeting, I believe, um, so I wasn't able to, I think only a few people went. Um, but I did watch it online, and one of the, um, so Don wasn't the only one who was invited to speak. Um, Chad from Monday Township was invited to speak. Um, had a lot of very interesting things to say, so if you're interested in kind of more information about this, that's a good thing to look up and, and. Watch that as long, but it's interesting. Um, one of the things that I did catch from, um, his portion of the testimony was. So, and I know I had brought this up before, that, um, the agreement that was shared that Sandisk had turned down had a series of tax abatements. Um, so they, the company, you know, building in there was not gonna be liable for a bunch of schools and bonds and everything like that. So Chad mentioned, actually, that Sandisk had agreed to pay Monday Township. I think it was ten billion dollars a year, or no, was it ten, hang on, let me make sure. Um, million, ten million, yeah, I was gonna say that, billion sounded bad, but so they, they had negotiated. Um, ten million dollars a year from, for fifty years, in, for payment in lieu of taxes. So I'm not sure who is making, you know, adding those addendums in there, but I would say, if, if you guys are negotiating with Tyler. Make sure that you guys are at the table as well, putting in your, okay, you know, yeah, you've got abatement for these bonds, so that you're no longer. Those properties are no longer contributing to our districts and our district's finances, okay, instead, you're gonna give us X amount of money per year. So I would say just be aware of that, that other municipalities are negotiating that, and that's an option, and that's probably something that you guys need to look into. Um, just so that they're not promising away all your tax dollars underneath you, and obviously Monday Township found a way around it, so. That's something to look into, so, thank you.
Thanks, Jenny. Anyone else?
I'm Michelle Groger. Um, I wanna follow up on a few of the statements that, uh, were made here. Uh, referencing the legalities and, um, that Don had testified. And Jen said there's, um, this meeting, so I wanna say this on the microphone, so that not only. Um, all of you could go to this and watch it, but the community as well who watches can see this, uh, hearing that took place Wednesday morning. It was, um, the Oversight Subcommittee on Corporate Subsidies and State Investments. The board listened to Don and Jennifer and, uh, Chad, as mentioned. Um, two being of the Monday Township Board, on the Monday Township Board, and active community members as well, or Don. Don, um, not, is not on the board, but Chad and Jennifer, but, so this meeting. Um, can be found on the Source Creek Monday Township mega site Facebook page, because they've. Shared it on there, and also, the website that it can be found on is, I'm sorry. I'm trying to keep this all together, is. House dot M I dot gov, house dot M I dot gov. But get on the Facebook page, and they share it on there, and you can, right, it was on there, because I know we were sharing it amongst ourselves, too. So, I'm pretty sure I saw it on there, so.
So there's another one on the twenty-seventh, next Wednesday as well.
So, on, on August twenty-seventh, it would be the opposing, is there another hearing with the? Not opposing, okay, so I just invite you to listen, I invite anybody who's watching this to listen to the Wednesday morning. Hearing and the upcoming August twenty-seventh hearing, what time is that one, Leah? Because you can watch it live. Live, ten thirty, okay, alright, that's all, thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Jennifer State, and I'm gonna speak on behalf of myself. Did the school ever research into what type of business and what this would do to the residents and the environment around your district and your students? Because the very first thing that your school board is supposed to do is look out for your students. So I ask you, did you do your due diligence? And make any kind of research, or do any kind of research to see what this would do to your local impact on your community? If you haven't, you should be doing that. Because I would think that the first question somebody's gonna ask you is, did you do that? The second thing I'm going to ask you is, before you took any kind of offer or make any kind of offer. Or get any kind of offer, has the school board done its own research to find out? Exactly how much your building and your property is valued at? For Marsh Elementary. Has anyone done the research on that? What is the property value, what is the building value? And what it would cost you to build that same exact building in another location at today's cost? Because I believe the amount, and I, I could be wrong, but I was told that you should be given at least. Two and a half times the amount of that value, I believe that would be well more than forty million. The third thing I wanna ask you is. What is the school getting out of this? All you've done is displaced families, displaced homes, broken up your community. Trying to figure out, slamming in deals, talking about dates that mean nothing. We were under this border, we're under this guideline, we've gotta know something by this date, we need to know something by this date. I think you all should be aware that the Oversight Committee is going to be investigating this for the next two months. And it wouldn't surprise me if some of these board members on the school board aren't called in front of the Oversight Committee.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, um, public, uh, public comment is over, committee comments? You can keep going, Chuck. That's from video, too.
So with that being said, thank you for your comments, they're all gonna be well taken, I saw my fellow workers write down, go to your. Uh, because you brought up some things that I did not think of, and probably some of us did think of. I did watch the video. Oh, I did watch, I did watch the video, I'm back to talk him out anyways, I can't talk soft. So I'm back to talking about, so I did watch the video the, uh, other morning, and it was very entertaining, very interesting. Uh, some of the people that talked are here, actually, uh, Don Ludwig and Miss Jennifer, and, um, yeah, they, they raised a lot of questions that, uh. I guess possibly could affect the school board and the district with the money, and if they wanna call me, I'll be more than happy to, uh. Uh, testify on what I know, uh, if they wanna call, if they wanna call any of us, I don't, I don't know if anybody has anything to hide, but I certainly don't. And I will tell them everything that I found out or I know, thank you.
About negotiating with the future potential buyer? Have, what, have we thought about that? I mean, like, why do we have to make this deal with Tyler? Versus the company that.
I don't think we've thought of that.
Right, yeah.
No, whoever, who brought that up?
Yes, Sue, that was a great.
Yeah. Gives us plenty of time, yes.
We, we're, that was a joke, bidding against each other, but, yeah, it's. But that, that's a, I mean, if, if something happened potentially down there, I didn't mean to ask, or whoever asked that question, I'm sorry, it's your comment, Tyler.
No, no, that, that was just it, I just, I like, I like that, I, I like that idea, like. So that way we're not doing deals with the guy who just tried to sneak the rug out from under us, like.
Right, yeah. With that.
Close it out.
We would, I would entertain your motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, just for support. We are adjourned.
Just a two-minute quick break.
Oh, more than that.